June 15 at 7:01 PM. And tonight, we will have several committee meetings and then have our regular session of business after the committee meetings. The first committee to meet is the Planning and Development, and that's chaired by Council Member Fall with members Reisner, Grace, and Smedley. Chris, you need to unmute. Chris, you need to unmute.
I have it now, thank you. Okay, this is Title 49, which is our licensing for the right-of-way, for the city right-of-way, for activities that go on. This is for a company, Zayo, that will be doing broadband development and putting in broadband, different types of broadband infrastructure, mostly optic fiber. So, thank you. They have all the paperwork done and ready and have proven their bonding and such. So, thank you. Questions? Okay, so that will come up in the council. Steve, do you have a question?
Chris.
Oh, yes. Sarah.
Chris.
Yeah. Sarah.
I'm just wondering where all this is going to be, like what's part of the city? It looks like maybe the mayor.
Yes. Mayor?
You should have, hopefully, it's a rather expensive package, but you should have the actual route, but it'll go basically from North Congress down Carpenter, Stimson Avenue, and then it goes across the Stimson Avenue Bridge and on to County Road 25, Rock Riffle. And then ultimately, I believe in the larger map, it goes from the Plains, the whole project from the Plains through Athens and then on to, I believe it's Stewart, Ohio. So, it's a large project, but what council has before you is just the working in the op- boring in the right-of-way in the, on the streets that I just told you.
There's a map in the back of the packet that was on the drive today. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll now move on to City and Safety Services, and this is chaired by Council Member Grace with members Fall and Claude Felter. Who's doing the line, Member Grace?
Hi. Everything froze for a moment for me there. Sorry about that. Yes, so I want to discuss a resolution that I plan to bring to council next week, and this would be a one-reading resolution. It's something that I've been sort of watching what's happening to our state and think that I would like to add my voice to this particular issue and hopefully other members of council here agree with me. And it is a resolution to designate racism as a public health crisis. And there is currently a concurrent resolution in the Ohio Legislature that has been introduced to declare it as racism as a public health crisis statewide. And a few cities have adopted resolutions to this effect. As someone with a background in public health, public health education, I just, I want to add Athens' voice to those cities and speak to this in support of that concurrent resolution in our state legislature. So, a few of the highlights that will be included in the resolution, just to clarify why this is important and why racism is truly a public health crisis, it's partially been brought to the forefront due to our current global pandemic and the COVID-19 crisis in our country. And that black patients are dying at larger-than-expected and record numbers. COVID-19 is killing black people at 2.4 times the rate of white people. Black people are also disproportionately suffering in part due to longstanding, unaddressed health disparities, as well as systemic racism and other socioeconomic inequities. According to data from the Ohio Department of Health, maternal mortality in Ohio is two and a half times greater for black women than it is for white women. Infant mortality in Ohio is between two and a half and three times greater for black babies than for white babies. And the Health Policy Institute of Ohio reports that life expectancy for black Ohioans is almost four years less than that of the life expectancy for white Ohioans, or for Ohioans as a whole. So, to join with the city of Columbus and Franklin County and just to express support and acknowledge that this is a problem that needs to be recognized and should be recognized and addressed at all levels of government, I wanted to bring forward this resolution. Yes, Arian?
Thank you, Member Grace. I appreciate your initiative on this, especially given your background. Would fully support this. Would your resolution have any action steps that the city could take that would sort of take our words into action?
Thank you for asking. I have some draft language. I would like for the city to commit to reviewing all portions of Athens City Code with a racial equity lens, to commit to conducting all human resource and vendor selection activities with a racial equity lens, including review of internal policies and practices such as hiring, promotion, leadership appointments, and funding. And something that has happened in other cities and perhaps would happen at the state level is the establishment of a working group to promote racial equity throughout the city. Those are the ideas that I have seen in other resolutions at this point and that I feel we could put into action here in our own city.
Thank you. Looking forward to reading it.
Member Claude Felter?
I also strongly support this resolution, and I don't know, would you be open to one little suggestion?
Of course, yes. That's why we're talking in committee.
All right. You're the author, your call, but I think one of the reasons that so many African-Americans get sicker with COVID-19 is because they live in food deserts, so they don't have access to healthy produce and, you know, veggies and fruits, and that's just so sad. A lot of them have to buy their food at convenience stores or something, and that probably leads to more diabetes and heart issues. So, I think food deserts are a really horrible thing for African-Americans.
I concur, and the, I just brought up four of the wherethes. It's my draft resolution at this point is just over two pages long, but that access to healthy food and also one thing that we're learning a lot about in healthcare, in children's services, in different applications, is the long-term health effects of trauma on children. And that is certainly something that it disproportionately impacts black youth in, throughout our state. The incarceration rates of black youth are significantly higher, and that certainly impacts their health, and so that is another portion of the resolution, is just recognizing several different conditions that currently exist throughout our state that disproportionately negatively impact the health of black Ohioans. And I will send out a draft. I've been trying to sort of bring together language from different ones that I've found and keeping in mind that it's, we are in Athens, not in Cleveland or Columbus or Cincinnati, but just because our black population is small does not mean that we shouldn't speak to these and acknowledge the reality of the situation. And as I said, I think it's really important that the members of our state legislature hear voices of support for this. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you, President Isley. That concludes the committee for this evening, then.
Thank you. All right, this concludes our committee meetings for the night and will now enter into regular session. Our first item of business being to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. The next item of business is disposition of minutes, and we have the minutes for three sessions. The regular session held on May 18, special session held on May 26, and a regular session held on June 1. So, if someone would make a motion for approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Yes, and a second by Council Member Grace. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Next item of business is communications, and do we have communications from any council members? Council Member Smedley?
Thank you, President Isley. I just wanted to share that I'll be hosting a virtual Westside Chat on July 13. I know that's a ways away, but I wanted, and I'll mention it again before we go out on recess, but that'll be hosted by Zoom. Anyone who wants to join that, if they would just email me and I'll get them the link, and I'll share this in other ways as well, but wanted to announce that tonight. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other communication items? Council Member Claude Felter?
I know this isn't, or at least I don't believe this is directly relevant to anything that's facing the Athens City Council right now, but I think it's worth recognizing the Supreme Court decision that was reached this morning to protect LGBTQ and trans rights in our nation. I was really pleasantly surprised to see that Chief Justice Roberts voted in favor of that and that Neil Gorsuch, a President Trump appointee, actually wrote the majority statement. And I think that our LGBTQ members here in the community are just really delighted by that, and I'm so glad that the Supreme Court did that.
Okay, thank you, Member Claude Felter. And it is germane because we have passed legislation in the past with the council on this very issue, so it does have a local precedent. Yes, Council Member Fall?
Also, the choice of the justices not to bring up the sanctuary city court case against California, so that stands, and so sanctuary cities are now basically legal. Thank you.
Okay. Any other communications from council members? If not, then we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No report.
Okay. Mayor Patterson? Nope, Mayor Patterson, unmute, please. Thank you.
President Isley, I just have a couple items to share with council tonight. I want to echo what Council Member Claude Felter just brought forward. It was astounding in a great way to see that, to where the LGBTQ community is protected against unfairly being fired or otherwise discriminated by, in their workplaces. So, watershed moment, for sure. The other thing I want to bring up, two more items, one being the work that'll start on the 18th on grants. The Safe Road to School Project will be rolling out. Director Hedy sent me a kind of a map of what that's going to look like with the posting of slowdown to traffic, you're entering into a neighborhood. It'll basically be on most of the arteries coming into the Morris Avenue area, so there's going to be, you'll see some posting along there off of Stimson Avenue, and then also some posting on Morris Avenue to remind people to slow down because you are in a residential area. Again, that'll begin on the 18th. The other thing, and I'm going to give this as kind of a preamble for council and for anyone who's watching tonight, and that is that the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council is wanting to have a Athens Carbon Fee Virtual Town Hall. Again, these are tentative, so just know that at this point in time. They're hoping that they can have a virtual town hall on July 1 at 6:00 PM, or an alternate date would be July 8 at 6:00 PM. And again, this would be to discuss the collection that will be taking place, or is taking place started this month, for the carbon fee that Athens voted greater than 70%, voted in favor of having a .2 cents addition, which on average would be an additional $1.60 to $1.80 cents, $1.80 to your utility bill. And the conversation will be to start discussing some of the first solar projects for municipal buildings within the city of Athens. So, more to come on that. Hopefully, I'll get more detail and can share again with council next Monday night. And I believe that is all I have to communicate with council.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. All right, we now move on to ordinances for second reading. 6920 is an ordinance authorizing the 2020 Street Paving and Repairs Project Number 333 and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Council Member Kotzis. No comments or questions, I will move on to Ordinance 7020. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the Athens County Commissioners as applicant and grantee, if funded, for submission of an application to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, for the program Year 2020, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP Program, introduced by Council Member Grace. If no comments or questions, I'll move on to 7120. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids for construction of the wastewater treatment plant, Dewatering Improvements Project, Number 320, introduced by Council Member Grace. No questions or comments, I'll move on to 7220. This is an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the city sewer system improvements project, Number 330, introduced by Council Member Grace. If no comments or questions, I'll move on to 7320. This is an ordinance amending Ordinance 13919, authorizing construction and construction engineering services and property acquisition for the Kimes Reservoir Project, Number 324, introduced by Council Member Grace. And if no comments or questions, 7420. Is an ordinance affirming the city of Athens will pick up the statutorily required contributions to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System for the employees of AFSMI Local 2403 pursuant to Internal Revenue Code, Section 414H2, and is introduced by Council Member Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we'll move on now to ordinances for, oh yes, Council Member Claude Felter, yes.
I'm curious about the one that you just read, about the PERS retirement fund. Is that something that always happens, or is that a new kind of bonus benefit option?
This is something that historically has happened, and there was earlier legislation that I believe is probably maybe as much as 10 years old, I think was noted in our previous discussion. And when the PERS system performed an audit for the city of Athens, they recommended that we have another ordinance that formalizes what we are practicing and what we had approved in earlier language, so it's not so much a change as it is a documentation of an existing program and are paying into the PERS system.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Now, for ordinances for first reading, 7820 is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring, excuse me, I'm sorry, I skipped one. Ordinance 7820 is an ordinance amending the 2020 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Clerk, is this ordinance also up for suspension of the rules? Does the clerk? Okay. So, this is, there are a couple of items in our appropriation ordinance tonight, some appropriations for the courts who received some grants from the Supreme Court of Ohio, as well as a decrease and an increase within the auditor's funds, and I'll go ahead and read those. Section 1, the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance 13019 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: $5,380 to Clerk of Court Computer Fund, TC, excuse me, Clerk of Court Computer Fund 231, transaction code 200, for a Supreme Court Technology Grant Award, and $29,650 to Clerk of Court Computer Fund 231, transaction code 500, for a Supreme Court Technology Grant Award, and increasing the total appropriations by set amounts. Section 2, the 2020 Appropriation Ordinance 13019 is further amended by decreasing General Fund Auditor 101.102, transaction code 300, services by $1,000, and increasing transaction code 500, equipment, to purchase a desktop scanner by same amount, and decreasing and increasing the total appropriations by set amount. Thank you, President Isley. Any questions about these, about the appropriation ordinance? Yes, Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowell. I'm just wondering if we do, we would need to keep in mind that perhaps this would need to be suspended next week to be passed prior to our recess. I believe that at least the court grants, they would like the authority to go ahead and move forward with that funding, so.
Thank you, Member Grace. I knew that there was some rush to get this done before our break, but I wasn't sure if that had to be tonight, but if next week works, then we will look forward to that next week.
Yes, just wanted to comment on it while I was thinking about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, President Isley.
Thanks, all right. We'll move on to Ordinance 7920, which is an ordinance authorizing the payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency, introduced by Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is a, as mentioned, a prior year expense for solar canopy personal device charging stations, and this is an amount that we will submit for refund from the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council. And I'll go ahead and read section 1 here. Auditor is hereby authorized to expend up to $5,318.50 from Recreation Fund 270, transaction code 500, to pay a prior year expense to EnerFusion Incorporated to complete the payment for the solar canopy personal device charging stations. And this had to be an ordinance because it is a prior year expense and it is over $3,000. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to Ordinance 8020, and this is an ordinance amending Ordinance 6120, Athens City Code Title 1, General Provisions, Chapter 1.03, Code Fees Established Solid Waste, Recycling, and Optional Composting Rates, introduced by Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As the public and council is probably aware, we've worked very hard on updating our trash and recycling ordinances over the past few months. Fortunately, we discovered an error in the last amendments we did, and that is, for at least a decade and likely much longer, all sewer water accounts in the city of Athens have been paying for the recycling support fee. When we rewrote the ordinance to update the most recent fees with the contract, the recycling support fee was included in the container rates, both residential and commercial. But what we neglected to realize was that the recycling support fee still went to all water sewer customers in the city of Athens, including those who are in the large apartment complex units. And so, we needed to add this amendment back into the appropriate code fees in Chapter 1.03, as well as the Ordinance 6120. And the only change is adding recycling support fee, $3.50, for non-participating solid waste units. And this is just bringing this back to the way it was prior to the most recent changes. It's no increase, it's just making sure that we have our budget ducks in order. Are there any questions about this ordinance? Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. And my only question is, will we be able to approve that next week, or do we want to suspend this tonight?
I think that I would like to make a motion to suspend. I'm sorry, I should have done that before.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to suspend, and we have a second from Council Member Fall. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Rules have been suspended, Council Member Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 08020 in order to have this completed before our recess.
Seconded by Council Member Fall, okay. So, we have a motion and second for approval, and we have the description of it, and are there any other questions or comments? Council Member Claude Felter?
I do just have one comment related to the new citywide curbside composting program. Do you know yet, Member Crowell, when that's going to begin?
You know what, right now, we're voting on just the amendment for the code for the reason, I think, so we can answer that administrative question probably later during announcements. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. We'll move on to Ordinance 8120. This is an ordinance accepting a certificate of registration from the Zayo Group LLC for use of the city's right-of-way, introduced by Council Member Fall.
Thank you. I suspect that we'll read it a second time in our special session. It's about what we just discussed in the committee meeting about use of right-of-way to improve broadband in the area. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and if no comments or questions, we will move on to 8220. This is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for a guardrail replacement upgrade, Project Number 98361, and declaring an emergency, and is introduced by Council Member Kotzis.
President Isley, thank you, and this is our standard boilerplate LPA agreement, where we are basically just granting ODOT the right to do work within our city limits. Once again, ODOT will be responsible 100% for this guardrail replacement, which will be happening on US 33 by the 682 exit ramps. Project is going to bid in October. I don't have a start date of when that project would happen.
Okay, thank you. And any other, any comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on now. Okay. We'll move on now to ordinance 8320. This is an ordinance establishing a pilot program and guidelines for the approval and installation of temporary sidewalk extensions for use by the general public at appropriate locations within the public rights-of-way and declaring an emergency. And I believe this is, is this introduced by Councilmember Kotzis or all members of council? Doesn't say on here. Councilmember Kotzis, if you would go ahead and speak to this, and I know that we have some other people who are presenting on it also. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you. And and yes, as you know, as Chair of Transportation and always, always looking at that summer, you know, street closure, and now looking at a very, very blank summer, we are looking for additional ways to help businesses attract people and also provide safer places that people can can congregate at a safe distance and hopefully frequent businesses that they may not necessarily want to do so in an indoor environment. So parklets, this is, this is what we're, that we've been discussing for the last couple, couple of meetings. And I will mention, I can go into detail what has happened since the last meeting, but we do have City Planner Paul Logue present to kind of go over the bigger changes that have happened to the conversations since then. So Paul, if you would be willing to speak to this, that would be great.
Sure. Be happy to. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk this evening. I will try to keep it brief. I believe you all have most recent updates to the document that was provided two weeks ago at City Council, as well as the updated map. I believe Deputy Service Safety Director Chicky emailed that out earlier this weekend or over the weekend. A few, just a few comments on the changes. The first of which is that it was decided to move forward, move forward with this as a pilot program just for this summer. And that way we can do a test to see what works and what doesn't work before we move forward with codifying anything into Athens City Code as a permanent seasonal strategy. Makes a lot of sense, in my opinion, especially in light of our current situation, to see what works and what doesn't work. And then we can make sure that the code that we have fits really well for Athens. We can monitor as we go. We can collect feedback from various constituents and stakeholders and see how this works at the end of the, at the end of the summer. We did include, we also, again, because we're treating this as a pilot, when we started having conversations, we said, well, let's, you know, let's try a few other things and see if they work or don't work. One of those is to include a provision for the use of the sidewalk for seating immediately adjacent to buildings with the understanding that that would be shifting, maybe needing to shift some pedestrian activity into a right-of-way platform. The ordinance we revise, or the document that you have, if you see in the definition there, we did add that that would only be an option in a situation for a restaurant that has a waitstaff service, so that it's easier for them to keep an eye on their tables, as well as for the waiters and waitresses to make sure that the people that they're serving are the people that were seated there. A lot of the places, it's kind of more, a little bit more freewheeling, come and go, take a piece of, take a cup of coffee or get carryout food, and then you can sit there. So we thought that made a little bit more sense in that opportunity, should a business want to try that. We also extended the dates to the end of September as opposed to the end of August. Part of the reason why was in our conversations at City Council a few weeks ago, there was a question about, you know, how might this be impacted when Athens is up and running at full speed in September? And, or at the end of August. And so we said, well, let's, let's see, does this have an impact on uptown businesses at that point? Is it a good thing? Is it a bad thing? What are the, what are the conditions of these parklets at the end of three months? So we thought that was an appropriate opportunity for us to test that as well. We did make a few minor clarifications to the eligibility section and made a general cleanup of language for, just so it's more clear and understanding to, to all of us as well as potential applicants. And then very recently, I believe, late afternoon today, we made one final edit. Thank you to Clerk Debbie Walker for helping us with that to make sure that it was clear regarding ADA requirements that the, let me see, let's see if I can pull that up quickly here. Got a lot of windows open. It was recommended from the Disabilities Commission that we add a section on ADA compliance under enforcement. And so we did that. We included the language that they recommended to make sure that we were, make sure that they were comfortable with this process. I believe that's it that I have. Yes.
Everybody's leaving their mute on tonight. Perfect. Thank you, Paul. We do have a couple of questions from Councilmembers, Member Fall.
Great. This has also been supported in a couple other planning processes that the city has gone through, namely when we were doing the urban, the urban kind of healthy cities, urban process that we were going through when we were looking at this. So it's been in the planning documents and other processes that we've done. So I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay. Member Snidely.
Thank you. Just wanted to express my appreciation for reviewing those comments from the Disabilities Commission and addressing them and incorporating them into the plan where it made sense. And Deputy Director Chicky, thanks for addressing why some of those other ones maybe didn't make it in right now. It's a pilot now, and you'll be able to make adjustments as you go. So thanks for that. That was it. Thanks.
Great. Member Claude Felter.
This is, perhaps you recall, Member Kotzis, but I would be in favor of suspending this so that it can be approved in June rather than having to wait until August, just so the business owners can try to do that all summer.
Okay. And, and you know, and this was, I was gonna mention this a little bit further on, but since you brought it up, Member Claude Felter. The permitting process has not been established by the city just yet. So if we suspend and attempted passage this evening, the city isn't really ready to get started on this. So I was thinking that, and plus, business owners at this point, they probably aren't going to be able to get everything in place and open up tomorrow. What I was thinking is, if we can kind of get a sense of where council is, you know, feeling on this this evening, we might want to consider suspension on the second read. That allows comments from citizens, business owners, and we might be making, you know, additional tweaks to this as we, as we move through the process.
I think that sounds fine, and that would still be in June. So that sounds much better than August.
Member Crowell.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. Thank you, Mr. Logue, for the update. I had heard that some of the plans of restaurant owners with servers in the city were to use the parklets as an extended sidewalk and to use the sidewalk as their extended restaurant space. And I'm in favor of this overall, but sort of envisioning what that looks like, I assume that restaurant owners would have the ability with plantings or something to basically close off the regular sidewalk, creating a space in front of their restaurant. And then if they have available parklets, obviously in front of that space, they would then be creating, and this is where it's very important to me, a very ADA accessible platform that would then go around that sidewalk space to reconnect with the sidewalk on the other side for pedestrians to safely travel. Am I understanding that correctly?
You did, yes. And that's, that is a model that's been used in a lot of other communities. So we've seen some examples of that. When we presented this two weeks ago, we did not include that in there. Kind of unsure about how that would really work. And since we were looking at codifying this as, you know, permanent language and code, we thought that was something that we weren't prepared to move forward or that we didn't think, because we weren't sure, we didn't want to recommend that, how that would look or how that would work. When we changed it to the, when it was advised that we could look at this as a pilot instead of as a permanent legislation, we thought this was the right time to try to change that or to try to see how that would look if somebody wanted to do that. But yes, your, your understanding of how that works would be correct, Member Crowell.
Okay, thank you. And also, I've had a number of questions from restaurant owners about the ability to serve alcohol. And my understanding is, is if that, that they would be able to do that in that, in that sidewalk space, be able to serve alcohol within their, within their space. There was some indication that there was a new Ohio COVID rule. Member Fall shaking her head about being able to do that in an extended space.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I apologize. I'm not able to speak on that. I'm not sure what the rules are on with liquor, liquor control and liquor permits.
Right. I think there was something in the municipal league bulletin that we got. They had a couple sections on alcohol and stuff. So that may be, if that's, that's where I saw it, talking about alcohol. So.
Hey. Member Grace, thank you for waiting.
No, no problem. I know that there has been an extension and perhaps made permanent by the Ohio Legislature to allow for drinks to be purchased, like alcoholic beverages to be purchased with carryout. That was something that was introduced as a temporary thing with COVID and has been continued, I believe. But I, I just, I don't know about the alcohol being served on sidewalk spaces or, but I think that that could definitely get tricky for Athens. So that's something we definitely should be sure of, I think, before moving too far forward.
Could I make a brief statement about that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Well, you have two issues. One really is our open container law, and that's being on our city street or on the sidewalk with an open container. And the other is that when the permit premises has issued their license, they have a license for a specific area. And more likely than not, that area just includes the inside. Usually the liquor permits have an actual drawing. So those are two issues. And I think this would be issues, the first one would be, well, the second one would be an issue that the permit premises would have to deal with, with, through the Ohio Department of Public Safety liquor control. And then the city would have to address the other issue of open container.
Okay. Member Claude Felter.
Thank you very much for pointing out those legal considerations, Law Director Eliason. I think those are really important. I also think that it would be really tricky on Court Street because there are so many student bars on Court Street. And if we let the restaurants do it, it would be kind of discriminatory if we didn't let the student bars do that. But I'm just afraid that students would spill out all over the sidewalks with, you know, beer and everything. I don't want to be mean to students. But I think that could make Court Street look a little bad, and it might not be as appealing to people who want to go to the restaurants.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, Member Kotzis. I'm going to attempt to do something because I want to go back to the use of the parking space as a pedestrian throughfare or sidewalk. When I was in, when I was in Little Rock, Arkansas, two years ago for the National League of Cities Committees and Leadership Meeting, I came across something that, if I can get this to work. Hopefully, you can see on my cluttered page here. Can you all see that?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's an example of an ADA accessible sidewalk extension around a built-out patio. This one is clearly more permanent than what we're exploring for the city. But I really looked at this closely and it, I was intrigued back in 2018 by this feature. And it seemed to work well. I spoke to the restaurant inside and basically asked them, how in the world did you get this through? But Little Rock, Arkansas had passed ordinances back some time ago to allow for this to take place. And my comment to council early on about this in that there needs to be certainly within the design, a level of drainage. And you can see in this image that they certainly have that for gutter drainage, a clearance of water. So again, I just wanted the viewing audience as well as council to see an example of it, kind of thinking of it in reverse to where the dining space is built further out from the facade of the building, and the sidewalk then is maintained through the parking space.
Okay. I do believe, we do have a comment.
Member Kotzis?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just had one other thing. If, for the, the business owners who would like to pursue this option, it's a pretty expensive investment for them. And I think that the possibility that this would only be available to them this year might be significantly concerning. So I do think that's something we'd want to keep in mind that in terms of it being a pilot project, not a permanent plan, I would, I would like, you know, I would hope that it would be a, this will be permanently adopted as long as there are no disasters, as long as, but because we, our, our business owners would need to have some, some assurances that this is an investment that they'd be able to use for multiple summers, not just one summer. So that I wanted to, to put out there. Thank you.
Okay. And, and Member Claude Felter, one second. I know that Danny Underhill from the, from the Athens Chamber does want to chime in on this. So Scott, if you would be willing to hatch her in, and Member Claude Felter, if you want to mention your, your comments.
Sure. I wanted to agree with Member Grace on that. I think that maybe we should word this carefully and just perhaps say that this summer would be a pilot program to find out what works and what doesn't, or to identify ways to make it even better. But we might end up having better quality parklets if, as, as Member Grace said, if the business owners could just invest in nicer, nicer objects or whatever, nicer planters or whatever that they could use for years rather than just thinking, oh, this is just for three months. And, you know, why should I get a really nice planter or whatever, you know? And they might just give it much more thought and consideration if they thought that they would be able to do this for years. But I don't know. I think that City Planner Logue has probably given this a lot of thought. So it would be interesting to see what he thinks about that.
Well, I, you know, the first thing I would say is that it was, it was uptown business owners that were asking us to do something. And so that's, we are responding to what they, what they were asking the city administration and city council to do. They, they needed, it is clear that they need help. There's only so many ways that we as a city and as an administration and council can, can help in these situations. And obviously, one of the ways we can do that is through the legis, is legislatively, by passing laws, of course. They have Health Department rules that they're under right now. And so they're, a lot of these restaurants are actually closed today, you know, right now. A lot of the bars uptown are going to be closed as well for into the near, into the next several months, we would, we would expect as well. And so we were aware that a few, a few business owners are interested in doing this. We did survey work to better We did survey work to better understand that. They're aware. We had a conversation with the Uptown Business Association last Wednesday. They're aware that we are the conversation is now that this would be approaching as a pilot program. We asked several of them if, or we asked everybody who was present then if they if they thought that was a hurdle or not. They said no, they totally understood why. And several of them were still interested in proceeding. They're aware that there's risk involved. Of course, they're aware that they're going to have requirements under the permit. They're aware that they're going to have to invest money into this project and that it may not work. And so it's in their best interest to make sure that this works as well.
Okay. Member Crowell.
Just real quick. I think the language pilot program is fine. It's really semantics anyway, right? I mean, counsel can can amend legislation at any point if something is not working, whether it says pilot program or not, it can be changed.
Thank you for that clarification. And and Danny Underhill, if you would be, I'm thank you for joining us tonight. If you'd be willing to state your name, address, and if you represent a group, then please feel free to add your comments to the conversation. And you may be on mute.
There we go.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
We can, yes, thank you.
Great, yes. Good evening, council members. Thank you for the time. I'm Danny Underhill. My residential address is 89 Main Street in the Plains, Ohio. I'm here as a representative as the President of the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce, representing the area business community. I want to thank you all for your leadership during this extraordinary time and for considering this ordinance. I'm here just to speak briefly in strong favor of the stated pilot program for the temporary use of these rights ways. The program as written currently has promised to assist businesses during this economic and health crisis. As many of you might be aware, Athens area, especially uptown, a lot have narrow or small or otherwise limited space that's not conducive to physical distancing as it's recommended by the state or other health authorities. Additionally, the outside space with open air will certainly create consumer confidence and encourage residents, locals and students to visit all of these establishments while still remaining safe. And while this ordinance has immediate impact, the fact that it's a pilot and has so much discussion around how to make it successful, it has limitless possibilities of what the future might look like in the uptown area. So again, thank you for your time. And in closing, I just want you to consider, you know, the local establishments that will benefit from this opportunity. Thank you all.
Perfect. Thank you. And one last call. Is there any other additional questions or comments at this point? Okay, all right. President Nicely, I am I am done. Oh, wait.
Did we have a comment? Councilmember Reisner, were you wanting to make a comment?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry, I had to get up for a moment. I'm really in favor of this whole whole project. I think it's a great idea. Looking over the the ordinance itself, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance now, the proposed ordinance, with the following attached to the bottom of Section 1, which would state the administration will report to council within 60 days on the success of the pilot project and make suggestions for improvements for the future. I'm sure that's really what they have in mind to begin with, but I'd feel a lot better if I actually saw it in the ordinance itself.
And Councilmember, Councilmember Fall, are you seconding that amendment?
Yeah, I think reporting is a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second for amending. Is there any additional discussion?
Mayor Patterson.
I'm supportive of that. I think that amendment, Councilmember Reisner, is is a good amendment and I support it. Thank you.
All right. I have a technical question. I think I need to rely on, and let me ask this. I believe we have council or not council member, Deputy Director Chicky, who may have a comment to make for us and this regards the order of how things might get done tonight. So I want to check with you. Let's get Mr. Chicky's comments first, please.
Good evening, council. The only note that I have, and I think that City Planner Logue did an excellent job of presenting the information and sharing kind of the work that's happened to this point. The only note that I have is that upon passage, I'm confident that within one week of passage, we'll be able to have an application process up and running and active. Most of that work has been completed at this point. Some of it hinges on the passage of the legislation itself. So we're in a holding pattern for the completion of that work. But once passage is complete, I am confident that within about one week or five business days, we can have something up and running.
And so my question is, you know, Councilmember Kotzis had previously mentioned that we would have one more reading. But so here's my Robert's Rules, I think, question. We have a motion and a second to amend. And if we go ahead and vote on that, I'm wondering if council would want to consider suspending tonight in what order that happens? Do we amend first read for the first time, then move to amend? And that can, or be moved to suspend after it's been read the first time?
It's been read for the first time, motion to amend, then take a vote on that. And it is amended and read as if the first time. So then it'd be a motion to suspend if that's what's required tonight. But perhaps Mr. Chicky can speak to that.
As far as
So as far as as far as suspending, are you are you recommending from the administration point of view that if we can suspend tonight?
That is correct. We're prepared for that.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess the question is, though, to Mr. Chicky, is it required? I mean, would it be enough that we pass it next Monday night? Which would be the 21st? No, 22nd, excuse me.
You're asking if it would be necessary to pass tonight as opposed to the 21st?
22nd.
I don't know that it's absolutely necessary in the sense of with the exception of the businesses being able to get themselves in line to to get moving and start the work of building. Obviously, once this passes and we go through the application process, there's a period of time between when they receive the approval for the application, when they can actually build and deploy these. So there is a period of time that would have to that would be taken up.
President Nicely, I guess you could call for the vote on the amendment. And then if one of the council members wants to make a motion to suspend, they could do that after the amendment passes. But that's really up to council.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Kotzis and I think we have a comment there, too.
Me raising my hand in my own committee. The so my understanding, so it would take about five working days to get the process on the administrative side in in order is, and you will will administration not work on that until the ordinance is passed? Or would you be working on it this week and then and then passage on the 22nd?
We'd be working on it this week to include the the additions and corrections up to this point. So for example, the addition for accessibility to include that in the application process and to to make revisions like that. So it's happening at the same time. But I don't want to say confidently that we would have that deployed ahead of past legislation.
Mr. Mayor, did you have additional comments? I think I saw your hand.
Councilmember Kotzis, I will wait until the amendment passes and then I do have a comment after that.
Okay. Right now, we have a motion and second for amending the ordinance as and the language was read by Councilmember Reisner to add to Section 1, a component for reporting back to council within 60 days. So all those in favor of the amendment to 80, I'm sorry, 80, 82?
83.
83, 83, 20, signified by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time.
I move to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a we have a motion and second for suspending the rules. And but I do want, before we take the vote on that, I do want to we had said we would authorize the mayor to speak. You have a comment to make, Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, President Nicely. And my comment is simple. We're under a pandemic. The pandemic is having a pretty significant impact on all of our businesses in the city of Athens or the majority of them. And in particular, those as Director Underhill indicated, you know, some of the uptown businesses that do not have a large amount of seating capacity on them already. And now, under the guidance from the Ohio Department of Health, it's even more significant. I implore council to suspend the rules and pass this tonight so that the businesses have enough time to gear themselves up. In the meantime, I'm confident that the Deputy Service Safety Director Andrew Chicky will be working through in parallel to get our our permitting process through. But I really feel strongly that we need to make sure we're protecting the businesses in greatest need right now and giving them the time they need to to act upon this piece of legislation if they choose to. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I have one more technical question. I am so glad you're here, Law Director Eliasson. So we have a motion and a second to suspend. And I believe the motion was made by was a Councilmember Claude Felter and seconded by Councilmember Reisner. Once those rules have been suspended, what I'm wondering is, can we then, the ordinance was originally introduced by Councilmember Kotzis. And so will we be bringing that back then for Councilmember Kotzis to make the motion to approve? I would think.
Yes, that would be fine to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so right now, our motion for suspending, we have the motion and second for that. And that is given the rationale, I think, provided very succinctly by the mayor. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Okay, the rules have been suspended and now we'll move return to Councilmember Kotzis. The rules have been suspended.
President Nicely, thank you. I would like to make an emotion, make a motion to adopt ordinance 08320.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilmember Claude Felter.
Okay. And please, then, thank you very much. And I would like to, I'd like to thank council and administration for for being so gung ho on this. This is, you know, and I do have, I have, I have a couple of different hats that I wear. And, you know, as a business owner, I do understand what what people are experiencing and what and what what businesses are dealing with right now. At the same time, I've sat in the council seat for over four years, so I understand the process. So I know that this is this is extraordinary. But I guess we're in extraordinary times. So so thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and second now for approval. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Thank you. All right. We'll now move on to a resolution for first reading. And council members may notice, we, thanks to Law Director Eliasson and Clerk of Council, Debbie Walker, we have revised language so that we are in compliance for mentioning the correct codes. So this is Resolution 920. It's a resolution affirming that funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund will be expended only to cover costs consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 801, formerly 42, and I'm assuming United States Code, excuse me, 601D, and any applicable regulations as is necessary pursuant to House Bill 481 before receiving said funds and declaring an emergency. And this is the legislation, it's being is required of all municipalities and townships to be able to utilize the CARES money that's coming in. And the legislation that's moving through the state legislature proposes to use a modified version of the local government funds to distribute some $350 million of federal aid from the CARES Act. So it's, we've been walking through with the help of the mayor, the law director and the clerk, the regulations and the registration that we need to do to be in compliance with this. And I'm going to look to Clerk of Council Debbie Walker to for a nod to see, do we need to in fact suspend this tonight?
Yes.
Yes, we do need to suspend. So if that is possible to have a motion and second from council members on suspending the rules?
So moved.
Do we have a second from Councilmember Crowell? So we have a motion and second for suspending the rules, the reason being that we need to get this these coronavirus funds and our registration for them in order as quickly as possible at this date. All those in favor for suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? The rules have been suspended. And now it would be helpful to have a motion for approval.
President Nicely?
Yes, Councilmember Crowell.
I had this on my agenda to introduce tonight. Do you want me to go ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, I thought it was all members of council and I didn't see it in the revised text. It didn't have who was introducing it. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I think you've covered most of it. But but if you want me to continue from here, I can do that.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, President Nicely. And as described, basically, we have had a motion and accepted to suspend the rules in order to get this done as quickly as possible so that the city can take advantage of the Senate Bill 310, House Bill 481, which will hopefully provide reimbursements to the city for COVID expenditures. And I'll just read a few pertinent sections of this resolution. Whereas the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act 116, Public Law 136, called the CARES Act, was signed into law by the President of the United States on March 27, 2020. And whereas the Ohio General Assembly established a process for distributing funds provided by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, Economic Security Act in Senate Bill 310, now House Bill 481 of the 133rd General Assembly. And whereas Senate Bill 310, now House Bill 41, requires subdivisions receiving funds under Section 1 of the Act to pass a resolution affirming that funds from the County Coronavirus Relief Distribution Fund may be expended only to cover costs of the subdivision consistent with the requirements of Section 5001 of the CARES Act as described in 42 USC 801, and any applicable regulations before receiving said funds. So I just want to make sure that the city administration has been doing a very good job to advise all departments to 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 track their COVID expenditures. And this resolution is necessary in order for us to hopefully get a maximum distribution of reimbursements for those expenses. And the resolution is necessary in order to make sure that the city is doing this correctly. And that's why we're doing this, suspending the rules tonight. Yes, comments? Member Claude Felter?
I'm just curious. Does this this opportunity make it clear what the maximum amount of money would be that we could that we could get?
I don't believe unless the mayor knows that there is any kind of maximum figure attached to any of this. I believe the the number of $350 million sticks in my head. That may be the total amount available. Obviously, we're not going to receive that. But no, I do not know. Member Claude, Mayor Patterson? ourselves. Uh, but no, I do not know. Member Claude, Mayor Patterson? No, we don't know. Again, as was indicated, it will come down through the local government fund formula. So we'll, we have yet to find out what that's going to look like. We don't have a clue. I, I would not anticipate it being an extremely large amount. I wouldn't anticipate it being, um, well, we'll just have to wait and see. It won't be a large amount either. I, I mean, you know, just to be clear, it's, it's there for all municipalities across the state of Ohio. So they're going to have to spread that out. And restrictions are quite clear. They're very, um, clear on what this, what can be reimbursed. And it really has to be directly public health, safety, uh, COVID related, um, purchases, et cetera. There are comments from council members. Okay. Well, I, uh, move that we, although maybe we've already done it, uh, move to adopt resolution nine 20.
Second.
Thank you. That was couns, uh, seconded by council member Claude Filter. All right. So we have the motion and second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Motion carries and this resolution has been approved. All right. We have a few other items of business tonight under announcements and other business. The first of which is the appointment of Megan Almeida to the environmental and environment and sustainability commission by council member Crowell.
Thank you, President Nicely. Um, I couldn't remember if I had forwarded her information to everybody. So I sent an email to you, um, late this afternoon, uh, with her resume and her cover letter. Um, uh, Ms. Almeida has been interested in the, uh, commission, uh, for some time now. Um, she previously, um, uh, wasn't available, but we've had a seat now, uh, that is, uh, opened up and she is willing to fill it. And she is a resident of the city of Athens, so we don't have a problem with a non-residency status. And, uh, the commission is, uh, very supportive of her if council agrees. Thank you.
And so is that, uh, so that's a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Megan Almeida for the Environment Sustainability Commission. Thanks.
And seconded by council member Grace.
Yes. I, I've known Megan for many years and I believe she will be a great addition to the commission.
Great. Good. All right. We have a motion and second for approval of, uh, Megan Almeida to the Environment and Sustainability Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Okay. The motion carries and thank her for her volunteer work on that. I would now, uh, like to have a motion for approval of the May financial reports, which were distributed to the council members last week.
So moved.
Second by council member, uh, Fall. Okay. We have a motion and second for approval of those financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. Okay. They've been approved and the auditor will be happy. Uh, next week we will be having, uh, we may have some need for committee meetings, but I know we have a special session, uh, that we have, uh, scheduled for the 22nd. And are there any other announcements that anyone needs to make? Yes, council member Claude Filter?
Um, perhaps this question is best directed to Mayor Patterson, but people have been asking me when the, uh, expansion of the curbside composting program is going to start.
Um, I am not sure when it's going to start.
Okay.
I'm going to defer to council member Crowell.
Okay.
Thank you, member Claude Felter and Mayor Patterson. Um, the, the program, as I understand it, and, but it's really up to Athens Talking Recycling Centers, which is running the program, uh, is that the program starts July 1st. Uh, they were, the timetable, uh, was, um, uh, to some degree, um, uh, ready for them to begin to order the necessary buckets in order to match the number of participants using the program. Uh, so they were, they were talking about a, being ready for a July 1st rollout. Uh, now it should be aware too, though, that the billing in the city of Athens is for the prior month. So residents won't be seeing that composting, uh, participation fee, uh, on their July bills. They will be on the August bills for the July service, if that makes sense. So we have a little bit more time and I would encourage, um, uh, members, uh, of the community who do not want to participate in the compost program, uh, to, uh, send an email to compost@athens.ci.ohio. No, say it, say it.
C I dot Athens dot O H dot U S.
Thank you. And, uh, we are, uh, trying to get that information out, um, as, as much as possible. Um, but it should be July 1st. Member Claude Felter, yes?
Um, I'm just wondering in terms of getting information out, do we know if there are going to be articles in the local newspapers or on other kinds of media? Because I, I just don't think people know enough about this yet.
Um, I understand that the Service Safety Director's office has issued a news release. Um, I have not seen it in the local newspapers yet. Um, and unfortunately, the article that did appear did not, uh, provide the, the pertinent information. Um, so, um, uh, Bruce Underwood of, of Athens Talking Recycling Centers, uh, was discussing a letter to the editor that hopefully would be published, uh, and I will do the same. So hopefully we can get the information, um, into the news, newspapers, um, if they will publish them.
And, uh, council member Smedley?
I, just to comment, you know, um, social media is also very useful and we can all do our part, obviously, to share it in that way. Uh, you'll reach, um, quite a few people that way as well. So I encourage you all to do that. Thanks.
Okay. So we all have lots of announcements coming up. Thank you very much for all your contributions. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and ci, city services that were not covered on the agenda. And I see that we do have three other attendees. Is there anyone who's wanting to make a statement? If not, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Council member Fall moving and member Smedley, uh, seconding. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay. All right. We're adjourned at eight 18. Thank you all very much for all of your help tonight. Bye, everybody.